Just in case you're asleep. It certainly is, yes. Good evening councillors and members of the public. Welcome to this meeting of the Western Area Planning Committee. Before we start, can I just remind you of the planning regulations which are on the screen behind me and make a note please for your nearest exit. We meet over under the canopy near Waitrose. Could you also make sure everyone that your phones are either off or switched to silent? And can you make sure that your cards are securely in the console so that we can hear you? Now apparently I can introduce the officers and they can be seen. But do I turn myself off or are you there?
No, there you are.
Right, your honour, are you officers? Right, in that case, good. In that case, on my far right is Lewis Jones from the legal department, Peter Cleveland, our head of development control, and Rachel Keller as principal planning officer who's presenting the application tonight. I'm delighted that worked, so very good. I'm sorry I didn't do it at sudden. I think we can move straight on to the main items of business. The minutes of the last meeting, they have been laid on the table. Are you content that I assign them as a correct record?
Agreed.
And apologies for absence, Emma.
We have apologies from councillor John Ward.
Thank you very much. And any declarations of interest prior to the meeting?
None prior to the meeting, but I believe Farnham Town councillors would like a non-perceptronary interest in the application on the agenda.
Anybody else wish to add an interest other than that one? In that case, are there any questions from the members of the public, Emma?
Number six, chairman.
And Peter, do we have any relevant updates to government guidance?
Thank you, chairman. I don't have any updates this evening.
Thank you very much, which brings us speedily on to the agenda. If there are any site inspections needed as a result of this meeting, they will be held on the 21st of November. So we move straight on to the application in question, number B1, WA 2017 1597, the Barn Old Kiln courtyard in the Borough Farnham. It's a change of use of the ground floor from mixed-use shop café A1A3 to form a dwelling. And this is Rachel, I think, who's going to introduce this.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. I'll start by showing you the application site. You'll see a locations plan here on the screen. You've got the arrow and the blue mark pointing out the building. It's in an alleyway which comes off the Borough and that's actually just to the side of Poundland. That's a big building you can see just to the left. Cursor working. This building here, that's Poundland just to the left. That's number four, the Borough just there. And this is the alleyway which you'd actually access the building. So that's an independent building there, just at the back. Here you've got an aerial view of the site. Again, you've got the little blue eye shows you where that building is. To the left of the side again, as mentioned, that's the top of Poundland, the rooftop there. You can't see it too well, but the alleyway just runs here between the two buildings leading to the main street. What we've now got is a proposed block plan. It's a similar plan to what you've seen, but one of the factors this shows is an external bike store position just here, and that would be in use by both the ground floor if this was permitted, and Lee already approved first floor. The proposal is for the conversion of the ground floor to a single residential unit. You'll see it's got a single bed in there and it's set with a studio arrangement there, although with a separate bathroom just here. This is Lee entrance to the building just here. And you also see there's a separate entrance leading up to the first floor flat, which has a separate permission to be converted to a residential unit. So the key factors to point out here, this building just here, this is the facing elevation of Poundland, that's a three-storey building which immediately faces the development. You'll see the main sources of light here, you've got two windows just here, those immediately face that facing building just here. And you'll also see you've got a glazed doorway here and a glazed panel just here, which also provide some light to Lee dwelling. You'll note that Lee other elevations themselves are constrained and there's no opportunity for any windows or openings on the remaining three elevations of the building. Turning now to the proposed elevations for the building, the external changes are relatively modest. You'll see the same windows there at the ground floor level. The main changes you'll see from the photos I'll show in just a moment are the addition of that door and a glazing panel in this location just here. The first floor at the moment is in the process of being implemented, the conversion of that first floor to form a flat at that level. So photos I'll show, you'll see that the works are in progress at that building. It's worth pointing out at this point that the first floor itself, as a point of comparison, benefits from roof lights which also give light to that level. Turning to the existing site photographs, I've got a small key at the bottom which will show you where they are, but I'll talk you through that as well. This is a building just here, so we're sort of around the corner at this point, but you can see the main elevation and you can see the works undertaken to convert that first floor level there. And from where the photo is taken from, that's from within the alley which you'd use to access Lee property. And in the foreground you can see a building just here, a small store which could be used for bicycles to be stored in. A few further site photographs to show you at this point. This is taken from the alleyway just with Lee application site on your left-hand side, and that is one of those two windows serving the proposed unit. And on the right-hand side you'll see the building of Poundland just to the right. And one of the factors to point out here obviously is that close proximity between the window, one of your sources of light, and a substantial building just facing it. In fact, I didn't point out on the previous plan, but the distance between those two measures at 1.4 metres, so you're in very close proximity at that point to the facing building. Later number two, this, you don't see the building itself, but this is the access way to the property. And the brick building here, that forms the back of Poundland, but that's the building which actually would, the proposed unit would face onto. And on the front, that's just a view from the Borough where you would actually access the property, just to the right of Poundland. That's the access just there. It's probably worth pointing out at this point, you can see obviously how the majority of that frontage to the building is constrained by that building opposite. And at this point here, again, you have a longer view, but again, you're facing that building. I'll talk you through now the determining issues for this application. Lee matters of principle and technical opinion are the planning history and the differences with the previous proposal. The proposal we have before us is the same scheme essentially as an application currently under consideration at appeal. That application was also refused. The proposal, as I say, the physical proposal's not been changed from that, and that is a material consideration to bear in mind when assessing the current application. Turning to the impact on design and visual amenity and the impact on the adjacent listed buildings and conservation area, the physical changes to the building are very modest and there's no harm identified in that respect. Highway safety and parking, again, there are no technical objections in that respect. There would not be any parking for that site, but given its town centre location and the previous use and amount that would have generated, there's no objection raised in that respect. The site is within the Thames Basin Heaths SPA buffer zone, but an appropriate legal agreement has been completed in the usual way to mitigate that impact. Turning to the matters of judgment, they are the standard of accommodation, amenity space, and the impact on residential amenity and compatibility uses. There's no objection recommended by officers in terms of the impact on residential amenity. It's situated among commercial uses primarily. In terms of amenity space, it doesn't have any amenity space itself, having no specific objection is raised in that respect, given its town centre location and good access to open space within the town. Standard of accommodation, that's the reason for the recommendation which is for refusal. And that takes into account really three factors. It takes into account the poor light from the building, and that's really taking account of its ground floor location, its proximity to a substantial building facing it, and that very small distance of 1.4 metres between the two buildings. And for a similar reason, the outlook to the dwelling is also considered very poor. Added to that is the small size of the unit which does fall below Lee space standards. The recommendation therefore is that permission be refused. And I'll take you through that reason for refusal. The suggested reason for refusal is that the proposal would fail to provide an acceptable standard of accommodation for future occupants, having regard to poor light, outlook and internal space. The proposal would conflict with paragraph 17 of the National Planning Policy Framework, policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, and policy TD1 of the Emerging Local Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Members, over to you. Councillor Hyman?
Yes, thank you, chairman. I'm Ward councillor. I had expected councillor Williamson to come and speak on this tonight, but he can't be here, I gather. So I will try and cover a few of the things that have come up. But am I allowed to come back as a ward councillor later if necessary? Because I'll only say, you know, cover a couple of things now if I am, see what others want to say.
Not in theory, but we're always very generous if you have something new to say.
I thought there was a sort of rule that the ward councillor would come back later or something like that, as it seems to do.
That's if they're a guest at the committee rather than a committee member.
Oh, I wish I was a guest. I wouldn't be invited, of course. I have got some understanding of the issues of this. I understand it was called in. The applicants had asked for it to be called in, but it was too late for it to be done. So after, the officers had said that it was going to be refused because it was originally refused, I think back in February or so by the officers, and then again a few months ago. So there is an appeal in, but the original reason I think was that the benefits outweigh the negatives. And if you look at the purpose, you know, if you're looking at acceptable standard of accommodation, it to some extent depends on the purpose, and the purpose is for a bedsit. I must admit, when I was a student, this would have been luxury to me, but that was many years ago when accommodation perhaps wasn't quite so good as it is these days. I understand this is about the cumulative effect of the three issues of the outlook and the light. The outlook and light issues have been questioned actually by the applicant. I got an email, I think we all got an email, and I'd just like officers to confirm that it would have glazed units that, I mean, where it says in our officer report, I think it says the only outlook would be from two west-facing windows which should face onto the brick wall. I understand that, that is, you know, if that was the only outlook and light, then that would be a problem. But I gather there's planned to, a big glazed door and a panel next to it, so if they can confirm that that's the case, because I think that makes a difference. And also, the student accommodation as bedsits certainly are exempted from the space standards, and we don't have the space standards anyway. So, you know, as a matter of cumulatively, I would expect all three of them, we would need to be sort of, to be questioning here as to whether they really are good reasons to stand up an appeal. Main issue is, what other viable use have we got? And I don't know, we couldn't really use it as a house, I don't think, without a garden or parking, and commercial use has been ruled out, and I think officers are happy with that. So I don't know, you know, what better use could we put it to? And I'll look to the other members for any ideas perhaps, because otherwise I think we should, you know, I'm tending to look at this as though, well, we need a lot of student accommodation in Farnham. And I don't know, I'll listen to the others. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. I'll just remind you, this is identical to the one that we have refused as a council. Councillor Frost?
Thank you very much indeed, chairman. Well, I support the officers' recommendation on this one. We're not seeking planning permission for student accommodation, we are seeking planning permission for a dwelling, and I think we have to look at it like that. In looking at it, I'm not sure how one would get an emergency vehicle to the dwelling if there was a need to get an ambulance, one of the blue light services there, because I can't see how there's sufficient room around it to get a blue light vehicle there. I don't agree with what highways have said about, because it's a town centre location, we don't need a parking space. We do. One of the things that's happening in the town is that town centre locations, people are saying, oh, well, it's town centre, you don't need a car, you don't need a parking space. And that's a bit of a fallacy really, because they do have cars and they do want parking spaces. And the parking spaces that we've got on the streets in town, like in Castle Street, there's a load of them which are allocated to the residents of Castle Street, and then the others are pay and display meters. But going back to the actual room here, I don't think there's enough light even for a student to sit there and, although I notice the desk is placed under the window, so obviously there is going to be a bit of light. And if it's a female student, the dressing table is placed next to a window as well to put the makeup on. But if I look, I dislike intensely the idea of the bathroom, rather the shower room, because I don't think that's meant to be a bath, being actually next to the kitchen. I dislike that, but this is my personal view. I don't like bathrooms and toilets being next to kitchens or opening onto kitchens. And I, there's not, I don't think there's a lot of storage here. Sorry, but I know at the moment we don't know what to do with this building, or rather the applicant, the owner, doesn't know what to do with this building. But I really cannot support it as a studio dwelling, sitting, whatever you want to call it. And I think the officers have in fact got it right. It's a pity, but I just don't think it'd be suitable for people to live in.
Thank you, councillor Frost. Councillor Storey?
Thank you. Like councillor Hyman, when I first left university, I would have considered this luxury. I lived in a bedsit considerably smaller than that. However, two things strike me. I actually went there this afternoon to have a look at what the light is like, bright sunshine. The upper floor was bathed in light. The courtyard and the ground floor was exceedingly dark because it's all in shadow. And that worried me. I see we've got a shed there which is labelled as site office at the moment. Is it the intention that that then, the same shed becomes the bicycle store, or is there something else going to go in there? Because it actually constitutes quite a large building in the courtyard area as it is at the moment. My personal view is, I'm like councillor Frost, I don't like sanitary next to the kitchen area, but if it meets building regulations, it meets building regulations. Emergency vehicles, I can't agree with councillor Frost there, because we've already given permission for the floor above to be a flat, and if there's a problem with emergency vehicles, then it applies to both. On balance, I think you could live with it if you were a student and you were going to be there for a few months. But we're not giving permission for it to be restricted use, and so I will be voting against this one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Storey. I thought we were turning into a Monty Python sketch room a moment then, very different times from when we graduated. Any other members wish to add something to this? Councillor McLeod first, and then councillor?
Thank you, chairman. I think the issue here to some extent is what is this building going to be used for? In that, you could imagine this ground floor being a small office or something like that, because the light wouldn't matter quite so much just for an office. But I understand it's been marketed for three years for this sort of use and no one is interested. And it certainly wouldn't be useful as any kind of shop or cafe. So that seems to leave the answer that it can only be used for residential purposes. And there's only two ways of doing that. The one, you turn it into a complete house, and if you turn it into a complete house, you're using the ground area for residential purposes anyway, or you have the two separate flats. And it seems to me actually it'd be better as two separate flats actually, because as a complete house, it'd be perhaps a three-bedroom house, which would imply possibly a family or something like that, a small family. So you potentially have children there with no garden, and as has been said, no parking. So it doesn't really seem to be a good idea to make it a house. So I understand all the problems about light and all the rest of it, but something's got to be done with this building, and it's got to be used for something. And it seems to me that that is the best use of it, so I'll actually be supporting it in fact, supporting the approval of it. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor McLeod. Councillor Hargreaves?
Mine is purely a point of principle. If we've already turned this application down prior to today, and just a very little bit has been changed, I do not think we can possibly grant this application. Otherwise, it makes a mockery of what we decided on the first application. Thank you.
Councillor Fraser?
Thank you, madam chairman. I went to see the site a couple of weeks ago, and I was courteously invited by the site agent to enter the premises and inspect it. First impressions of the plan from the drawing here is that it is very small. But upon entry, I noticed it had quite a good height, which makes it look bigger when you're in there. The windows have already been fitted as part of the work to the upstairs. And when the site entrance to it was opened up completely, one got an impression of what a glazed front door and a glazed side screen might represent by way of light. And indeed, there is a good measure of light on the premises. I was there not on a sunny day where the contrast might have been higher, but I was there on a very dull day, and the amount of light that was entering was, in my opinion, quite sufficient. And of course, this could be supplemented by a good idea in the conditions of putting sun pipes, two, one over the kitchen and one in the toilet. I take your point about toilets being exited into vented lobbies, but I do believe that is now old fashioned. We do not need another cafe, if that was ever a serious intention. Farnham is well provided with cafes, and this is not the right place for a cafe. In my opinion, the aspect is unfortunate. It has 1.4 metres up there, but it's 1.7 metres in the text. Never mind, it is close. Another good idea would be to actually, despite it being a listed building, I would think that wall could be painted or have painted panels applied to it, not just white. Something that the art college could perhaps perform on. There is a blue through altered gold.
I think we're getting slightly off planning matters here, councillor Fraser.
Yes, it's a good idea. I know it's not a planning matter. But even so, the wall could be painted and the pipes turned into silver birches. The art college could do that. And in fact, this would be ideal student accommodation, and they are desperately needing student accommodation. If it was possible through another condition to make it student accommodation only, then I think it would be an absolutely ideal accommodation. As for the outlook, we have similar basement rooms looking out into areas, and these have been given approval. I've scouted around outside and I've found at least enough area for four-wheelie bins, because that has also seemed to be a problem. Parking places, well, numbers two, three Borough, right next door, lots of flats been approved, no parking places for them. But there are plenty of parking places in Farnham. I do believe that with a little bit of forced ventilation, a couple of sun pipes and a bit of white paint, all of these objections could be overcome. As for the area being below technical standard, well, I think your technical standard is wrong. It's slightly smaller, and so it's 86% of the technical standard. Unfortunate, but the technical standard has not been adopted by Waverley. Unfortunate, but it hasn't. And as far as I can remember, it is about twice the size of the student accommodation occupied by my son when he was at university. So I intend to support this application for those reasons.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Fraser. I was a little bit worried about what you said about visiting the site with an agent. That is, we...
Agent, informant.
Yes, but we are not supposed to do informal site visits without an officer present. It's for your protection, not for the agent's protection. So that doesn't matter, councillor Fraser. I do think we must be careful how we approach every single planning application in this authority. There was a question you asked, and I can't remember what it was now, and I was going to ask the officers to answer it. Have you got anything you wish to say, officers, before I take another speaker?
Thank you. Yes, there's probably a few points I can come back on just to give a bit more clarity. I think early on there's a question about, pointing about two windows. It's correctly pointed out, there's also a glazed door here and a glazed panel there. What I would say in terms of outlook, because if that's your main front door, it's a question whether you want to have views in and out of that from a privacy perspective. The same applies, which is why then you also have to look at the alternative sources which are your two windows just here, but acknowledge there is a door here and a point of glazing at this point. Some question about access for emergency vehicles. I would repeat that we have permitted other uses along that alleyway, including at first floor level.
This could work out where?
Yeah, sure. So this is the location just here. As you say, it is along an access from a narrow alleyway, so the nearest point in which you'd probably get a large vehicle, I'd assume to be this point here on the Borough, as opposed to right in front of the building there. It is quite a narrow point of access, but noted that that is an existing position. Turning to the car parking, what we also take into account is not just the town centre location, but what the use would be generated from the existing use of the building. So the lawful use for the building at the moment is as a cafe, and that would generate a parking requirement in itself. So we're not projecting this as a net loss as a result. So that's part of the justification behind suggesting it's acceptable in that respect.
Just remember the question, Rachel, while we're at it. It was the question about making it students only. If you could just answer that one, thank you.
Yes, of course. Turning to students only, what we'd have to look for is some reasonable justification for restricting it to students only. And I suppose the question for members would really be was, is a lower standard of accommodation therefore acceptable to students over anyone else? And I'm not aware of a policy that we have that would support that basis, so that would just be my advice on in that respect. One of the suggestions that's put forward, just to come back, was about painting the facing building, I believe, in terms of attracting more light in that respect. I mean, just to point out that that isn't within the ownership of the applicant, so in terms of requiring that, there would be another landowner involved to do so. And our listed buildings officer, I'm sure he wants to have a say as well before we start painting that building which is listed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Frost. I will take you now, but I think, Lewis, did you have something to say?
Thank you, chair. I was just going to add to what Rachel said about the proposed condition to restrict the occupancy to only students. Rachel asked for some legal advice on that, and we agreed that in the absence of any relevant policies or recognised need for that student accommodation, I think it would be hard to justify that the condition should be imposed. And I also don't think it would, I don't think it would meet the necessary tests set out in the national guidance, such as it being necessary and reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Frost?
To do with the students, I don't believe we should expect students to have a lesser degree of accommodation than we would give anybody else. And whilst the front of that building, where you've got the desk and the makeup thing, dressing...
dressing table, will be light, because the door's there as well, as you go backwards to where the sink is and the bathroom etc, it will be dark. And, you know, I think for us to, we're not being asked to grant planning permission for student accommodation. We are being asked to grant planning permission for a dwelling. We have no means of knowing, if we grant it and say it's for students only, that there are students in there. You know, how do you control it? You cannot. Once you've given planning permission, you've given planning permission. You know, I just think this is too small, too dark, and I just have heard nothing which will make me do anything other than support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you councillor Frost. I'd like to move to the recommendation fairly quickly, but councillor Hyman, if you have some new points?
Yes, well, I mean, obviously in terms of councillor Frost's issue, I mean, I don't think it's at all about expecting students to have lesser accommodation, because it's more about cost and having depth for students and having, you know, affordable or cheap accommodation rather than none, if they can't afford something which, you know, as older people, we would expect something better, quite rightly. But I did plenty of years at university, so I was happy with anything I could get and afford back then. I think this is probably about consistency, because I know we've granted town hall buildings, no car parking at all. So, you know, parking isn't an issue there in town centres. On outlook, I know that the last meeting that we had here, if you remember, we had 25 Alfred Road, and that had habitable space in the basement with absolutely no outlook whatsoever. So we've got to be consistent on that point as well. If we're going to say that outlook is required for a bedsit, but it's okay if there's no outlook from habitable rooms in houses, you know, I don't think we've got any grounds for that. I certainly wouldn't want any sort of condition in respect of restricting it to students. I just think they're the ones who would probably live in it. And obviously the owner would be able to control who they let it to to some extent, I would imagine anyway, if that was an issue. The technical standards don't apply, the light's okay, so I can't see that where we've got a cumulative, you know, I'm looking at, this is at appeal. Can I just ask, taking up councillor Hargreaves' point, because this concerns me, I don't think it's actually been turned down by committee, has it? I think the point is that the applicant wanted it to be put in front of the committee because it was, because they wanted us with our local knowledge to look at this rather than the officers, where it's actually been refused by them. So I'd like that confirmed. But my main issue, I'll finish on my main issue here, I think. I understand that, because councillor Williamson and I met with Rachel a few weeks ago, and we were told that if this was a house, and the council would be happy about it, then, because obviously the rooms could be arranged differently, so that... I mean, I don't know, there is a light problem, because the applicant has written to us and said there isn't, and it's been tested, and it's been tested on the basis of having glazed panels. I think if we grant consent to this, what we need to do is to say that if those glazed doors aren't going to be there, then we would want a light tube, that there would have to be more than just those windows, so an either or condition, something like that. But the main issue, as I say, if this would be okay as a house, then we would have no control over what was done inside, therefore it's okay. You know, what we're saying there is that it would be okay to have residential use in the ground floor. So if we've said that and we're saying that, we simply can't turn around and say that this wouldn't be. So I'm thinking we'd lose it on appeal on that point alone. Because, you know, it's okay as a house, we can't control it, therefore it's okay.
I think Rachel wants to come back in on that. And certainly nowhere have I heard or read that it's okay as a house. We're looking at one application at the moment for a dwelling. That's what we're here to look at tonight, and on that alone. And as for who made the decision, it makes no difference at all. Waverley Borough Council has refused an identical application. That is just a fact, which, whether it came down delegated powers or through the council, is not relevant as far as the decision is concerned. The decision stands, and that's the decision that's at the moment with the inspector. So can I just ask if the officers want to come back?
Thank you. Just a small point, we haven't made, there's no formal decision which establishes the acceptability of that unit for residential accommodation. One of the points that I've informally advised is that there could be consideration given to using a space for non-habitable accommodation. So if that's like your utility room and the other less key rooms in the house, which one might support the upper floor accommodation. So that's just an alternative there, and obviously that would have to go through the normal channels to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be ready now to move to the recommendation. In that case, the recommendation is as on page 25 of your committee papers, that permission be refused. Please, can I see all those in favour of that recommendation?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
And all those against that recommendation?
Three.
And do we have any abstentions? In that case, permission is refused. Thank you very much, everybody.